Good afternoon, everybody. Happy Sunday. Thank you all for coming on what is turning out to be a beautiful Sunday afternoon. And so we recognize that you've chosen to be here instead of being outside. So hopefully, we'll make this time useful for you. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church. We're going to provide you all with an update on the George Mason High School design process. And we'll also provide an update on the economic development process. We've got a good number of our city council members here. Let me just introduce them. And when I turn it over to Dr. Noonan, he will lead off with the school presentation, and we'll do economic development second. He'll introduce the school board members. But we've got Vice Mayor Mary Beth Conley here. We have Letty Hardy here, Phil Duncan here, and we have Mayor Tarter here. And Mayor Tarter, would you like to say any welcoming remarks as well?
Sure.
Put you on the spot. Do you have a speech prepared?
Sure.
No, I just wanted to echo Wyatt's thoughts and thanking you all for coming out. I know it's been a long process, and we do have miles to go before we're done. But we are making some great progress. There have been, as you guys have noticed, twists and turns along the way. And I imagine there will be a few more of those before we're done. But we are thoughtfully considering what's going on and spending a whole lot of time, at least on council and the school board as well, in contemplation of what's best for the city. And so I'm delighted to be here with you, and we continue on this path and process of keeping you as informed as we can and seeking your input as well so that we can make the best decisions possible for our community. So thank you all for coming out this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. So this is our 12th Sunday Series meeting. And so some of the material we'll cover is background, just for those who are here for the first time. A lot of it might be material that you're familiar with. But let me just actually ask, just so we know our audience, who is at, who's here for the first time for one of these Sunday Series meetings?
Welcome.
All right, welcome. Glad you're here. And let me ask also, who here lives in the City of Falls Church? Okay. And who here lives in Fairfax County? Okay, great. All right. So that's helpful for us to just know our audience, and we want to make sure that the information we're putting out is useful. This also is information in. So we will give presentations, but then we want to get questions and comments back from you as well. We do have a microphone, and the reason for that is that this is being taped, and it will be rebroadcast on Falls Church Television. It's also available on the city webpage if you want to stream it over the Internet as well. So again, thank you all for being here. And Dr. Noonan is going to present the school updates first, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Noonan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome, and thank you so much for being here. For those of you that are here for the first time, thank you so much for coming. It is a real exciting time, continues to be an exciting time for us here in the schools. We are on the precipice of getting to a place where we're moving towards construction documents, which are the actual documents that will drive how our building is going to be built. And we have a lot of information that we want to share with you today. But before we do that, I do want to welcome our school board chair, Erin Gill, is here, Vice Chair. Greg Anderson is also here. And I think that is it, with the exception of one former school board member. We'd like to welcome back Karen Sharp, welcome from North Carolina, to come here about the school. So we're glad that you're here as well. So today, just for a little bit of context about the way that we're hoping the afternoon will sort of lay out, is that we've invited the principal architect on the project, his name is Dirk Jeffries, to be here. Some of you who were here a while ago have had a chance to meet Dirk before. But Dirk is going to present to you some information that was shared at the school board meeting last Tuesday night. And during that presentation, what Dirk did was he went through the new plans that are sort of revised, that are based on the feedback loop that we have created during this period of time that we've been talking about the school. So going back to two Novembers ago, when we passed the referendum here in the City of Falls Church, we instantly got into a conversation about really what would this building look like. And through the course of conversations and over, well over 100 meetings that we've held through the community with community groups such as yourself, focus groups that we've held, we've met with all of our teachers, we've met with a number of students, hundreds and hundreds of students at this point, lots and lots of parents. We have gotten feedback continually. And as a consequence of that feedback, the drawings themselves and some of the design changes have happened based on that feedback. So where we were is not where we are now. We are actually in a much stronger place, I think, in terms of the design of the school to meet the needs, the broad needs of not only the community, but also our teaching faculty at George Mason High School, and really the students that are going to be served in that building for the next 25, 30, 50 years. And so as we look at the building, we are looking at it for a long horizon, something that's really going to be in place for up to 50 years, and really believe that this design is going to be flexible enough and nimble enough to allow us to modify, adapt, change, overcome as needed during that period of time. But when we open the building in, hopefully, December of 2020 or January of 2021 is when the building completion will happen, we will be ready to welcome our students in in an environment that is really vibrant, filled with light and space and opportunities for collaboration, and really meet those elements of an international baccalaureate educational program that we're trying to meet in our new high school. So I am very excited. I feel like we are not on a glide path yet, but we can see the lights in the distance and are starting to line them up to get on that glide path because there are some really great things happening. So I'm going to invite Dirk up here in just a second, but before I do, I just want to kind of reorient you to a couple of things here. If that, Dirk, that's okay with you, and then I'll hand it off to you. This is the revised elevation that some of you have seen, and it's not significantly different than the elevation from the front that, or rendering from the front that we had before. But what you'll see here on the front is that one-erf, which is sort of the walk-up area where students will be able to enter the building. We've got some areas of water retention systems here, bio-retention systems, so storm water can be taken care of. But this really is the front of the building where students will enter into a secure vestibule, which Dirk will talk about a little bit when he comes in. And you go left into, on the first floor, the administrative office. You can go straight into the heart of the school, which is the big area that kind of opens up with lots of action and activity. Or you can go right into this portion of the building on the first floor, excuse me, which is our auditorium. And then the floors go up from there and also go down from there. And so we're excited about sort of how those designs are coming along. And today, you'll see some artist renderings that really begin to provide, I think, shape and idea of what this building's going to look like when you walk in. Here's some just acknowledgements of some of the groups that we've had a chance to meet with over the last 14 months or so. We've met with all the faculty and staff at George Mason High School, including our students, grades nine and 10. We've also met with teams from Thomas Jefferson and Mary Ellen Henderson to get their sense of what they're looking for in a high school of the future. We've met with the community, and you see some of the community groups, just representative of the groups that we've met with, FCCPS, all of the central office staff, Mary Ellen Henderson, and then all kinds of boards and commissions here in the City of Falls Church as well. And so we are really excited about the opportunity to have met with all of these folks. And again, we've met with over, more than this number of folks and over 100 times with people over the last 14 months. Site plan, floor plans, elevations, and schedule, I'm going to turn over to Dirk Jeffries, again, who's the principal architect, who will walk you through the designs, kind of like he did on Tuesday night for the school board. But we are, again, really excited. March 1st is our big date. We look like we're going to be able to have a submission of the design documents on March 1st, and that will give us a chance to kind of churn through those design documents, make sure they're right. And then towards the end of March, 1st of April, move into those construction documents because we are on track to break ground at the new high school as soon as school is out this year. So we are looking at about a June 15th, 16th, 17th start date to get a shovel in the ground. So again, with that, I welcome you here. Very excited to share the work that we've been doing, and I'll turn it over to Dirk. All right. And this just is for sound for the TV purposes. I don't think it projects.
Do I need this?
Yes. Either that, or I can give you this. Okay. All right. Here's.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. And as always, we thank you for your continued support and interest in the project. You know, one of the signs of a good design process is when the client knows and owns the project as well as you do. And I think that's certainly the case with Peter. Peter, your command of the design and the project process is extraordinary. And so also, as Peter mentioned, we are completing the design development phase. We will be submitting those documents on Friday of this week. The design development phase is an important milestone in the design project because at the end of the design development, most of the major design elements are finalized. So at this point in the project, the rooms and the walls are set, structural concrete, structural steel has been designed, all of our mechanical and piping has been sized and routed around the building, electrical power and lighting systems, low voltage AV, IT, data, security systems have all been designed. And all of this work today has been integrated into a digital model, and that's a great deal of work. And so we'll be spending the next weeks and months before June, then refining the design through detailing every single feature of the project. So masonry coursing will be enriched and detailed over the next phase of the project. Classroom equipment will be detailed over the next couple of months. So this is, all the big moves have been made, lots of work still to do. We are right on schedule, and we would not be on schedule if not for all those folks that were on that slide that you just mentioned. So to be where we are in such a short period of time is credit really to your staff and Daisy, your team, and the teachers, and everybody in the community that we have met with. So thank you to everybody for all of that. As Peter mentioned, this is exactly the slide deck that we shared with the school board on Tuesday, hence the date of February 19th. We began that conversation Tuesday by acknowledging that the concept was inherently flawed back in the last summer because it lacked the voice of the community. And today, that's absolutely not the case. We know a great deal about the requirements of the school, and that's what we'd like to show you. So the slides today reflect all of that input over the last six or seven months. So let's begin with the site. And so you'll recognize, you'll recognize the footprint of Mary Ellen Henderson and the two, and the footprint of the, of the high school here. It is still true that, does this work? Yeah. So the athletic stadium complex and the baseball field remain unaffected by this project. And everything else is brand new. So this is the softball field with new lighting, a new scoreboard. These are the six new tennis courts. This is the new synthetic turf, multipurpose field here. And then we have with a new so-called Mustang Way, that is the main pedestrian route from the parking all the way to the athletic complex at the back. And we also have a new promenade for public access to the stadium complex around this corner. In terms of parking, there are 400 car spaces provided by the project. 213 of those spaces are provided in what we call Phase 1 of the project, which is along this border. And about 187 spaces then are designated spaces in the parking structure that is part of the Phase 2 Economic Development Project of the George Mason site. In terms of the site, all of the trees that you see are some of the 200-plus trees that are new. We're also, as part of our landscaping plan, removing some of the invasive species that occur along the perimeter of the property. Last time, I think, we showed the site, I'm sorry, the site plan, I think school bus parking was still occurring on the site. Today, the school bus parking has been moved off of the site. This site also, this plan also shows the coordination as it is at the moment with the economic development team. There's some very, very interesting moves that are being made to transition and to create a shared but safe buffer against the economic development. What you're seeing right here, this is the one-erf that Peter just mentioned a moment ago, just across, and this is approximate location of that 10-acre parcel, this side. Right here is what we're calling the Grove. This is where it is at the moment. This is one of the things we will develop as we get into CDs. But right at this point, we're calling the Grove. This is against what will be the new hotel. So this is a hotel footprint right about here. And right at this point, there is an open-air breezeway planned. So pedestrians will be able to actually move right through here, right through an open air space, right onto the plaza. And that little gray space right there is where we're currently showing all of the relocated donor brick pavers that currently exist at George Mason High School. So we're looking at the nature of this space. You'll see a small turnaround loop here. This is designed so that there's a new light that is being proposed as part of this development at Haycock Road. And at that light, and this is, I think this is Street A, Proposed Street A. Street A basically bifurcates the new development and comes all the way and meets School Street here. And right where it does, there's a turnabout. So the parents could drop students off here and then exit all the way back out to Haycock, again, where there is a signaled entrance, signaled intersection. This might also be a location where you might call for your Uber or your Lyft to pick you up right here. So we're looking at a very safe way of bringing parents all the way up to this point, but not interfering with the bus loading and unloading that would occur here at the end of the day. From the north property line, coming this direction, there's about a 19 or 20-foot buffer, landscaped buffer against this property line. Then there are two bike lanes. Right here, just showing just a little bit of that bike lane. And then there is a buffer against the traffic. There are two, it's two-way traffic. Again, Proposed Street B, all the way out to Haycock. And again, I think we have a hawk signal at that, at that intersection, correct? And then it's a landscaped median, and then it's a sidewalk. So there will be a sidewalk here going all the way out to Haycock, bringing everybody into the main arrival plaza of the school. You're seeing two bio-retention, I think we actually, yes, we do still have that one. These are bio-retention to deal with some of the stormwater runoff that will occur across the plaza. These are landscaped depressions that'll also occur through here, landscaped depressions that holds and treats stormwater and then lets it, is cleaned and before it infiltrates back into the earth, as clean water back into the earth. So you're seeing a lot of that along here. There'll also be one right about here. One of the early concepts was a shared kitchens, which means a shared service yard. So all of that area along Mary Ellen Henderson today, which is a depressed loading dock, all of that comes out, and this is all returned to green space here. That's it about the site. Any questions, or should we save questions? Go through, okay. So I think that's it on the site. Again, plaza. There is a terrace overlooking the softball field. This is the service area, the multipurpose field, tennis courts there, softball field, parking. Okay. In terms of the floor plans, let's start at the first floor. Plaza was right here. And this is the main entry. This is the so-called heart of the school, one of the planning principles that you had developed as part of the feasibility study was the heart of the school. And in our concept, the heart of the school ran from front to back and top to bottom. This is the main crossroads at the heart of the school, where I could go down or go up, as Peter mentioned, or I can come into the dining hall or turn and ride the elevators up or down right there. This is the auditorium. We'll talk more about that in a moment. Main office area, administration, dining room, and terrace. And then also, this is the track. So this is the public access to the track at zero. This is mine, at the ground floor, a track, which is essentially a bridge over the gym, takes you to the running track at the second level of the auxiliary gym. Let's look quickly at the auditorium, and I would, again, I would, members of our team have worked closely with Sean and Mary Jo in the Performing Arts Department to get this exactly the way they would like to have it. Today, it remains a 650 seats. Approximately 600 are fixed, and 50 are loose seating at the, at the flat area here. So if these were to come out, you could have room for an orchestra at the front of the stage. There are two catwalks, a catwalk over the stage as well as a catwalk over the main house. And I'm very excited to tell you that our current budget also includes the state-of-the-art rear projection system, which I know is very important to the performing arts group, and we've worked very hard to get that in. And today, that is in the project. So that is very special for a high school performing arts program to have rear projection in the project. If we were to step out, Act 1. In terms of security, this is the entry vestibule, completely surrounded by Level 4 ballistic glass. In that same area, there is a security desk, and this is the individual that will buzz you in to the reception. So reception has windows here, and here's a good visibility past the security of anyone entering the building. But no one gets into the reception area unless they've been buzzed in by the security desk in the vestibule. Once you're cleared and greeted by the receptionist, then you would enter back in through this door into the so-called heart of the school. And this is what greets you. So this is a very simple double-height space, very grand. It's achieved with simplicity in mind and lots of light coming in from the south. All of that is double-height glass coming in this way. And there are no doors. This is the auditorium. This is the main office, and then the media center up above. And this is the stair. This is the big, one of the few big moves we've made since concept was to introduce a way of moving students quickly and conveniently from its lowest level to the highest level. And so at the end of there is a stair which takes you all the way up. Right around the corner here is the dining room. And what you're seeing here, what you would see here, you can, if you imagine coming to school and maybe seeing your friends right up there, that is the café. That is the café that is right outside the media center on the second floor. One of the other changes we made early on was we took two parallel bars, and we made one of them at a bit of an angle. It provided more space at the far end by the concession stand, and it also made a little bit wider at the front door. That rotation of the geometry occurs right around that column. So that column is essentially the hinge pin of this rotated geometry, and that café is occupying the place where these two bars move away from each other. So a bit of an iconic object in the arrival experience. And when I get to that column, here's the stairs that would go down to the gym lobby. Here it is above, and right there, I'm seeing back into the library up above. And right down here is the dining room. This is the arrival experience as it is in the plans at the moment. If I were to go down, the dining room is three feet below so that it can match the elevation of the middle school cafeteria that exits currently. And the entrance to the middle school is just right down that way, right there. The, it won't necessarily be called the Mustang Feedback, but we are looking at ways of branding the high school cafeteria. This is the big window leading onto the terrace that would then overlook the softball field in this direction. And this area right here is one of several that we're looking at, ways of showcasing that existing hydroponics and aquaponics where the tilapia are being grown in tanks and one day being served on the line, I'm not sure. But there is some interest in creating that link between sustainable farming and food and nutrition. And so we're looking at ways of doing that as well. So again, administration, dining terrace. This is the view we were just looking at into the servery. And then here is the link back to the middle school. This is the line of the existing middle school today. If you remember from our concept, we are flipping the middle school vocal music program so that we can convert the music program into the middle school serving line. So the new kitchen with two serveries for middle school and for high school. The second level, right? So this is just above the cafeteria. I've come up the main stair. This is the balcony that overlooks that double-height space. So this is where the café is, library. This is our video and production classroom. This is area that will be shared with FCC TV. We'll talk about that in just a moment. But you can begin to see the two geometries and how they pivot about that column right there. So this is the café in this very rectangular form. You can see this rotation, and that little in-between space is the transparency of this small conference room. When you're up, when you come up off that second floor, the front of the school is that way. This is the idea about that café. And clearly, there's enough of a clue that the media center is here, the circulation desk, it's the window back to the middle school. Middle school is right through that window. And then right around the corner then is the media center. And again, early ideas. We do have columns there. There are 15,000 volumes in the library to be accommodated on low shelving. All the shelving has casters so that it can be moved about if the librarian would like to change the layout. You can see just faintly the glass wall of the, of that conference room, that in-between space. So private meetings perhaps in here, but soft furniture, collaboration. And all of this then is glass at the end, looking back out toward the economic development And on this area is the video production classroom. But you can see how the space here, this was the view of the café, and just across the café, just across the hallway, is a big Today Show-type window where students could see interesting programming or filming that might be occurring in the video production. Come right around the corner, and it compresses, space compresses, and then it begins to open, and then it opens again in the direction of the front of the school. So with this idea of being a community living room, it's well-positioned, it's flexible, and it can be a very active community space whenever you would like to open it. We get to the third level. All of the academic floors really are at 3, 4, and 5. So the arrival at the third floor is really another important moment in the journey up and down the school. And we'll talk about that in just a second. So all, this is what we call the fat bar and the skinny bar. I know it sounds like a diet snack or something. But this is the thin bar, and this is the fat bar, just based on the dimensions. 3, 4, and 5 are almost identical on the fat bar side. It's predominantly core academics, core academics over here, teacher planning and collaboration space there where the T is shown. This is what we're referring to as innovation commons. We'll talk more about that in just a moment. This is a terrace so that you can go from here directly to the outside. Also one on this side of the, of the third floor. Again, keep in mind, we're in the heart of the school, again, right here, heart of the That's what that area might look like. So I come off the third floor, there's the indoor amphitheater, we call this learning stair. I'm looking straight back out to that terrace, the green roof, Peter, that you just mentioned is just beyond that. And all of this is wide open. At the top of the stairs is a window, looking again back at the middle school. And this area right here with all that glass is one of the areas that's being considered for perhaps the sustainable technologies, urban farming, vertical gardens, hydroponics, aquaponics, something that you might feature right about here. And then again, in the notion of the innovation commons, we have a maker space right along this wall. We have another project lab, engineering lab, just above on the fourth floor, also overlooking this space. You can see an idea about students working with robotics. So you might have a robot war, you could have the garage band. This, this space with all of this is something that a lot of high schools just aren't getting, but you're getting it. And it's, the fact that it is surrounded by instructional space, I think lends itself to some really interesting learning experiences and opportunities. Inside the fat bar on the third floor, down the middle, is this breakout space. And again, this and this are the classroom walls. We're not showing exactly in this rendering what that, what that final decision about glass into the classrooms. I know we've talked about that before. We're still studying that. We're still studying that. And then up above, same floor plan on the fat bar overlooking this area. And then what you see there. Here and here are skylights in the fifth-floor courtyard, bringing natural light into that, that central space. We were just in this area, looking right here just a moment ago. Again, third floor. The fourth floor, very similar. Let me go back one moment. This area, I should also mention, early in the planning process, counselors and assistant principals today saw themselves working together closely, but in order to be closer to the students, that entire suite of professional space was moved to the third floor. So this is the counseling suite. Assistant principals and counselors are here. Again, we have art labs on this end. And then when we get to the fourth floor.
Rick, I'm going to add, I just want to add to that, on that, on that third floor where the counselors and the assistant principals are, there's social school, social workers and school psychologists in there. So the idea is to have sort of a one-stop shop for all student services in one space. And so we really felt like co-locate, they felt like co-locating with each other would allow for that opportunity to just walk out their classroom or their office, turn left, and be into the heart of the school, Innovations Commons, and then into that core academic, traditional core academic space. Oh, oh, yeah. Do you want to talk about the Genius Bar?
Yeah, you, while you were talking about, oh, yes.
Yeah, we also have a Genius Bar for our technology and the like, so.
Again, third floor, this is that, this is that learning stair marching up this way. But behind that learning stair, this space, students today, when they need help with their laptops and their programs and stuff, there is a help desk. There's a Genius Bar-type thing when you go to the Apple Store at the mall. So that operation is right here. And again, it plays directly into the, to creating a location and a place for student services. So if it's counseling, if it's AP, if it's a help desk for your computer, all of that is out front, lots of light, accessible, centralized for all of the students in one place. And so I think that should be very positive. On the fourth floor now, that area over the counseling, this is the special needs suite, the transition center, the life skills lab, speech, and OT and PT are all over in this area right here. The photography, darkroom, other art labs are on, again, over the, same labs are on the third floor. You can see the learning stair. And you might begin to see in this plan how this geometry then pushes itself through the thin bar, and so that all of that space may be perceived and experienced as sort of one object. The color of the walls, the treatment of the ceiling, the stair coming up, the students looking over, the windows from labs into that space. All of that should be one very exciting, central, creative kind of space. And so we're calling this entire space the Innovation Commons. So if core academic space is out here, then perhaps the application of that core learning, the applied learning, the labs, the hands-on labs, learning by doing, all of that is on display in this central part where the two, where the two bars come together. Let me show you one other thing. Right here on the fourth floor and the third floor, we are providing gender-neutral toilet rooms. But rather than a traditional layout that you see here on the Three, Four, and Five on the fat bar, these are traditional men's and women's toilet rooms. But on levels Three and Four in the thin bar, it is gender-neutral. So each of these, there are five stalls on this side, there are five stalls on that side with a common wash basin. Those toilet stalls are floor-to-ceiling, completely site-proof rooms. Almost like, almost like a private room. And separate light fixtures, separate fans, separate sprinkler head, all of these. So on Three and Four, gender-neutral toilets here. On Three, Four, and Five, a more traditional men's and women's toilet arrangement are there.
But it's a both-and.
It's a both-and. Four, much like Five, I'm sorry, much like Three. So again, at the top of the learning stair, along that back edge, more breakout space, more collaborative learning opportunities, something like this. This was this view right back here. We talked about the toilets. Now we're at the very top. This is the heart of the school coming all the way up. The fifth floor, just like the other floors, except right there in the middle now, we have an outdoor space, an outdoor courtyard. And you're beginning to see, and underneath that A is another skylight. So these are the skylights bringing light into the double-height space of the third and fourth-floor breakout space. On levels Four and Five, we also have this large space. And working through the planning and the design with our building partner, Gilbane, we actually found that it was cheaper to build more space and leave it open. We're essentially building in expansion capacity and yet another large breakout space in the high school. So that large space and the definition of that space for learning, we're still working on that, but the built-in capacity is actually in the project. So we included this one at the fifth level. This is a view right, right at this point. So we have two cross from one end to the other end, keeping in mind that Three, Four, and Five are above the large, high-bay volumes of the auxiliary gym, the main gym, and the aux, and the auditorium. We have two main trusses. One occurs right in this plane, and one occurs right in this plane. So for the three-story volume that are the classrooms of the fat bar, there is a double height truss that moves its way up and down through all the floors, Four and Five. And Level Three is basically hung from the bottom of these two very large trusses. So every now and then, the truss shows itself. And for all the attention that we provided on the thin bar for toilet rooms, what can we do on the fat bar? So there is one of the court members of the truss making its way down to the fourth floor. But where it shows up, we just push the toilet rooms off the wall. All of this is glass, and you can see that you would actually circulate around this. We can put the water coolers here, and then you enter into the toilets just off the hallway. So kind of an interesting opportunity to illustrate the structure a little bit and provide a little bit more separation between the collaboration and access, excuse me, access to the toilet rooms. Now, that's coming in from the main level and going all the way to the top. This is coming in now and going down. So the heart of the school is right here now. I've come in, I've gone all the way to the crossroads there, and then rather than going up, I go down to the gym lobby. And so at the gymnasium level, it is the competition gym, it's the auxiliary gym, and we have public restrooms, a concession stand, and storage, all at this level. But primarily, it is the competition gym and the lobby associated with that. And this is the idea, again, the ceiling from the main level, that double-height space reaches up to the media center, comes across, and the ceiling keeps going, and the floor goes down and then out. And so all of the gym is here. This is the bridge that goes across to the track at the far end, trophy cases. And then at this level, this gentleman is in the cafeteria that overlooks the gym lobby. So very three-dimensional, lots of transparency. We have glass at this back wall of the gym, so good views into the gym. And if you were to look the other way, as I go up and down the stair to the second and third floor, I would be looking also down into this space from the stair. So good visual connectedness across lots of spaces in the school. And then at the lowest level, the lowest level, we have our locker rooms, the fitness room, the weight room, and then the performing arts suite at this end. The black box, the band, the choir, practice rooms, the new, the music lab, which is another instructional space for keyboarding or digital music editing, which is pretty popular in schools today, large instrument storage, but it's all there. We also have then, as always, this is, this is the passage directly out to the athletic stadium from underground. And you'll see that in just a moment as well. So those are all the levels of the school. And band, choir, black box. Thank you. We have six in the plan. We have six single-user toilets, showers, and sinks. So lots of attention being paid to comfort and security, equity, access to toileting and shower facilities. So any student, any faculty could use any one of these six spaces. All, again, all to your point, Peter, all of the toilet partitions throughout the school are site-proof, shower compartments. Here and here are all site-proof shower compartments as well. Wrestling room in the back. That's a great clarification. Did everybody hear that? I called this the competition gymnasium. The main basketball court here is 94 feet end-to-end. Virginia High School, they only require is 84. The auxiliary gym is 84 end-to-end. But actually, both of the auxiliary gym and the main gym provide competition basketball courts at the high school level. 94 is college.
And state, and.
And state.
They prefer, the VHSL prefers to play district level, regional level, and state-level competitions on a 94-foot floor. So now that we have a 94-foot floor, we'll be able to host events that we might not otherwise have been able to host. So we'll have both, both qualify under VHSL, but having that 94-foot floor opens the door for us to do some things.
Again, the difference is because, remember, this has a track that goes around. It cuts off the clear court space above, so that's why 10 feet less. Thank you. In terms of the building elevations, in terms of scale and materiality, it's very similar to what it's always been. These are 2D, these are, can be difficult. But in terms of the approach to the elevations, you're seeing just a little bit of the middle school right here. From a code-compliance standpoint, if we stay 30 feet away from that building, we can put as much glass in this building as we want along its entire length. So you're looking at a 30-foot separation away from the middle school. Now you're looking at the thin bar from here to here. This is the four-story thin bar here. This is the five-story bar here, and then it is that heart of the school in the middle. This is the double-height entry lobby. This is that terrace at the third-floor Innovation Commons. And then that is the fifth-floor elevate, I guess I could use this. So here is the front door. All of this is the heart of the school. This is the stair tower that links the fifth floor all the way to the ground level. But this is the, this is the idea, right? So this is the, in plan, in plan, we have the fat bar and the thin bar, and we have the heart of the school in the middle. This is the back of the school. This is what you might see from the softball field, for example. So we have the, again, the five-story fat bar, but here, we go all the way down, go all the way down to the gym level now. So you see, if you look at this gray masonry band, and then you notice that it's taller here because it, it is sloping down along the athletic stadium complex side, and we'll see that in just a moment. This is the back of the thin bar. You're seeing the covered dining terrace here. This is the slope of the outfield of the softball field, so I can sit perhaps in the outfield overlooking a softball game. This is the back-of-house kitchen and servary for the high school, and then the middle school here. And you're familiar with this. We are updating all of our renderings right now. So we've been carrying these around for several months. And as we've made improvements and refinements to the design, we are creating brand-new renderings, which you'll see next time we get together. But it does, it does convey most of the changes, but not, not necessarily all of them. Sorry? We have study models, but we don't yet, to study some massing and some detailing, but we don't necessarily, haven't yet made a model of the entire project. But that was a good idea. Who suggested that? Yes. Good idea, good idea.
So one thing we did ask for, though, is, you might recall when the first presentation was done, they did provide us with a flyover. And I think many people saw that flyover and looked at it, and were really excited about it. But there's been so many changes since that flyover. We've asked for an additional, or a new flyover, revised. And so as soon as we're done with DDs, they'll start putting together a new flyover that will give you a sense of what that looks like. And we'll get that up on the website as soon as we, as soon as we possibly can. Laura? Yeah? So we're still working through that. We've joined forces with Parks and Rec, who have added a portion of it to their CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. And we are looking at adding it to the, part of it to the project budget as well, so that we will end up, we're planning to have lighting on that turf field. So the, the big gymnasium's capacity is 1,500. And that's just the bleachers. So there would be additional seating in the, on the, on the floor itself if we were to do graduation, for example, in the gym. And then the seating in the thin bar, I think, is 400 right now, or 450. But it's as many bleachers as we want to put in there, maybe, maybe three to 400.
Auxiliary gym?
In the auxiliary gym. But the big, the big gym will seat 1,500.
And that's compared to what?
In the pit? Or at Mary Ellen? No, I don't know the number, Nick, let me.
It's like 600.
At Henderson, it's, it's much less than 1,500. But I don't know what the exact number is. One of the questions that has come up, just for size, too, so maybe I can short-circuit it, is how many seats do we currently have in our theater at, at the high school, and how many will we have at the new theater? 499 seats right now in the current theater at George Mason. This calls for 650. So when we had Aladdin last weekend, for example, the place sold out, we, hopefully we'll sell it out with 650. But certainly, there'll be much more capacity in the new theater for, for that as well.
Again, this is just the two-dimensional elevation from the stadium, looking back at the building. And as I mentioned earlier, this is the front of the school. So if you notice, just, if you just pay attention to the proportion of that, so this establishes the datum, and as, as we go down 12 feet, this gets a little bit taller. And so in our concept, what this means also then is that the brick drapes then in front of the, the auditorium and the gym and the auxiliary gym. So what you're seeing here are louvers captured within the fenestration of the brick, which originally was only three stories of brick over a three-story plinth of darker masonry. So proportionally, we believe this works much better. And the masonry openings then are two stories tall and capture two levels of the building. So this is Level Five, Level Four, Level Three over the gymnasium. This gym, the gymnasium goes all the way up to here. Likewise, the auditorium goes all the way up to there. So these are ventilation associated with smoke removal from the auditorium. And then these are ventilation from mechanical mezzanines that are above the gymnasium. And so all of this glass in the middle is in the gym. All of this glass is in the auxiliary gym. And so if you're on the running track, you would be looking out these windows. This is cut right through the earth, right through the site at the building. So what you're seeing here and here are those tunnels that we looked at the very lowest level. you're seeing here and here are those tunnels that we looked at the very lowest level. When you leave the locker rooms at the very lowest level, this discharges directly at the level of the track. Again, it's, you'll see all of that. So it's a lot of building, working very closely with the site. And then this is just a cut right through the heart of the school, looking back at the fat bar from the middle school direction. So this is the entrance canopy. This is that terrace that we looked at. This is level three and four. This is that innovation commons. So this is the fat bar, and these are just windows. And all of this will be one-day green roof, vegetated roof, all the way from end to end at the third floor. So something like this. Again, the renderings are getting a lot better. All of this is still in development. You can see these tunnels. They're much more elegant than this. This entire thing is landscaped today, but the next time you see this, and by the way, I don't think the building will ever look quite like this, because for the lights to be on, there has to be somebody in the room. All of the rooms have occupancy sensors on them, and so I'm not sure that every single light in the building would ever be on at night unless someone's in there. So, but something like this is where we're going. And again, this is cut through that little connector. This is the face of our building that's looking back at the middle school. And then again, this is the dining terrace and the slope down to the softball field, and that's that gym lobby. Something like this. So there's that slot right through here. This is all, this is the, this is the, this is the library. These are the T art labs. That's the green roof that's over the front door. This is the terrace that you see just a little bit right here, the innovation commons. And then that was that outdoor courtyard on the fifth floor. You can see the plaza and the way around to the stadium. And right over here, right over here is Mustang Way, also making its way back to the stadium. So that's...
One thing you're not seeing on there are, you know, that roof will ultimately, there's no mechanical systems on the roof, and that's really important to us because we need a blank canvas for the photovoltaic arrays that we're going to put up there as we're net zero-ready. We can plug in then some PV arrays. And I forget the number that we need. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of like 3,000 PV arrays. So between that, the fat bar roof, the thin bar roof, and the roof of Mary Ellen Henderson, as well as a portion of the roof of the parking garage that will be built, we believe that we can get pretty close to net zero generation for this building pretty quickly. We're really excited about that. So that, in combination with it also being a geothermal system, in some ways speaks to, one, the values of our community, gives us a real opportunity from an educational perspective to use this building for sustainable renewable energy programs, to think about urban farming, to think about solar, to think about wind, to think about a lot of different opportunities and options from a curriculum perspective. But just if you can also picture that with some PV arrays on there, that'd be good. Yes?
Is that currently in the...
What we're hoping to do is some sort of power purchase agreement with someone. We don't know who, and I know that we're working on getting the RFP out, but the way that these power purchase agreements work is often a company will come in, they'll supply all of the PV arrays for a portion of the energy that's generated, and then we would take a portion of it as well. All right. So, yeah, do we want to...
What did I say this?
Yeah, let's go through the schedule real quick. So a couple of things to keep in mind, and then we'll do questions. Okay. Are the, sort of the schedule, these are the takeoff Gantt charts that we've been looking at, but here's where we are today. We're still in design. We're looking at finishing design and having those construction documents done in the June timeframe. We are in the DD, the design development phase and heading towards construction documents. Then we'll engage with Gilbane around the GMP, which is the greatest maximum price. The first document that will be a GMP-1, and then we'll do an addendum to that document as GMP-2 in the July timeframe. During the March, April, May timeframe, Gilbane, Stantec, and Quinn Evans will be going to the city for permits, and then we, again, will break ground in the middle of June. Here you'll see the opening of the high school somewhere in the December 2020, January 21 timeline. We do intend to occupy the building as soon as it's open, so that means moving classrooms relatively quickly from the old building to the new. School systems do it all the time. We are experts at moving lots of people en masse, and so we will, we will work through that, and we have a little bit of time to plan it, which is good. But once we're moved out, then the old building will begin to be razed, and we will continue working on the fields, sort of that complex in the back that you know, noticed that was, where the new softball field will go, the new turf field will go, and the new tennis courts. And then we'll finalize the site in the summer of 2021, and we're excited about that. Some permit approval dates, just to give you a sense of where we are, February 19th, there was a planning commission work session. On the 29th, there'll be a resubmission of the drawings and a second round of comments. March 6th, they will meet with the Architectural Advisory Committee here in the City of Falls Church. March 22nd, the second round of comments are due. April 5th, resubmission with a third round of comments, back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on April 29th. And then on May 6th, final action will be taken around the permitting and planning commission process, and then the permit approval is in June. The final approval will be in June. We'll be going back to the school board at about 65% of construction documents to share with them how things are coming along, and so you can, you can continue to watch school board meetings or check them out online, but we continually will update the school board as well. We'll continue with the Sunday series and holding meetings to continue to share with you the progress of all of this work as well. So GMP-1, just to give you a sense of what's in there, there's a whole bunch that's in there, including steel, utilities, and concrete. And then when we do the GMP-2, which is the greatest maximum price, you'll see some of the more finished kinds of things, wall finishes, ceiling, drywall, finished paving, and the like. And the school board design development review was the big meeting that we had on February 19th, and with that, we're going to stop and take questions because we've probably worn out our welcome, at least time-wise. But what questions can we answer?
For the benefit of the people watching.
Thank you. Three quick questions. One is the Falls Church TV is on the second floor. Does that have separate independent access? And what's going to, right now, there's a sort of an issue about people coming and going while schoolchildren are present. Number two, architecturally, I don't see the flow-through from the thin stick to the fat stick. It's not obvious where that connection goes through there.
Okay.
And the third has to do with air quality next to I-66. California's done studies, anything within a quarter mile is got a high amount of rubber airborne and other exhausts that need to be special, so we're wondering if you're looking for above HAP-16 filtering for the air system for the kids.
Well, I'll answer the first two, and then I'm going to call on my friend Dirk to take that third, because I'm not exactly sure how to answer that appropriately. So let me, let me start with the second floor, and let me roll back to where the FCC TV is. First of all, we are excited to include FCC TV in our, in our planning process. This is the second floor, so when you come up to the second floor, you can head into the media center. Here's that cafe, and then here's the video media production area. If you come down here, this is the media editing room. There is an area here for servers and the like, and then the media storage is here. This is the area that we anticipate that our friends from FCC TV will be working. To answer your question with respect to people coming in and out of the building, we have established an agreement with FCC TV that there's a period of time during the day that they can come in. They've all been badged and sort of vetted appropriately, and so we don't anticipate that that would be a change with FCC TV. So so long as those people that are coming in have been badged and vetted as they are today, they would be able to continue to access that area during the school day. And what's nice about it being on the second floor is that, remember, sort of the core academic programs happen at the third and fourth and fifth floor. So this was originally kind of the living room of the, of the school. This floor, along with the first floor, the gym floor, really becomes sort of the three floors of community use, so we would see lots of open access to that. With respect to the connection, so the connection between the thin bar and the fat bar, and this is on the, on the second floor, is kind of right here. There's this bridge area that goes across, and here, there's not much to, not much to see on this floor, but as we go up to the third floor, when you come up the stairs, you go into that innovations commons. That innovation commons really serves as the connecting between the fat bar and the thin bar. So if you...
One hallway?
It is. It's this one hallway here, and then there's one hallway back here that also gets you into that fat bar as well, and then there's a hallway back here and a hallway here. These are wide, wide spaces that can move students very easily to and from each side, and you'll see that on the fourth floor as well. And then the fifth floor, there isn't a thin bar, as you might remember. So here's, here's the, sorry, that's the third floor. Here's the fourth floor. You come up, same thing. We've got a hallway here. There's a hallway back here that connects all the way around, so it's kind of a big square. And then, again, when we get to the fifth floor, there is not, there isn't a thin bar, so it's just a direct connection to the fat bar. Do you want to talk about the air quality in 66? Because I don't know that I can answer that as effectively as you might be able to.
Not necessarily. I can do this.
Okay. Well, all I would say is that that has come up, who am I speaking to? Yeah, that has come up as a concern in the past. I want to say, and so HEPA filters are pretty standard on our projects, but I will verify that for you. Let me check for you. I don't know the exact number, but I will check on that for sure.
We can add that to our questions list and post that answer as well.
I've been very concerned throughout the process about the community use of the building. So where in the building would you have a meeting like this meeting right now?
That's a great question. Let me, let me say this first. One thing we're really interested in doing is making sure that community use is really simple. We've started to hopefully ease the process by changing our website in the last two months to make it easier to find where to log in to get community use, and hopefully we've simplified the process. That being said, we can see, I can see lots of different spaces that would be available to hold a meeting like this, starting actually on the ground floor. When you come in, I could see, count to it, and then we can kind of work our way up. But I think there's a lot of places, starting there, in the cafeteria. Certainly, we could use that space for any kind of meeting that we would need to have. On the second floor, there are tons and tons of spaces that we want to make available for community use as well, and that would be in the media center. Here would be available. This is where we have some breakout spaces that are a little bit smaller that we could use. We also can use any classroom that's in the building for spaces like this. There certainly is the auditorium if it's a big, a big meeting that we're having. This area is going to be rather large. We'll have a lot of seating in this area and space as well. And then on, on any of the third, fourth, and fifth level, these breakout spaces are really big, too, and we can set up some space for community meetings there. This innovation commons, this is where that learning stair is, so we could have a meeting in the, in the innovations commons, and people could sit on the learning stair. That's another spot we could use. There's also a number of learning labs that are larger than others that we could hold some, some meetings in as well. But the idea here is we want to, we want to open this up to as many possibilities as we can, because we do believe that this is the community school, and so how do we support that? It's something that's important to us.
Thank you.
We'll go here, and then here, and then there. Okay?
Should we need to expand and say 30 years, does the design accommodate going up or out or both?
It doesn't accommodate at the moment going up or out, but what we have done is we've built in space on the fourth and fifth floor, especially the fourth floor, and kind of going back to what Dirk had indicated. This floor here has some core space that can turn into three additional classrooms, and this building currently in its, in its design is built for 1,500 at about 20, I forget what the exact use is, but it's about 22 to 1 student ratio. So if we went up to 24 to 1, it would accommodate more than 1,500 in its current form. And then if you added three more classrooms on the fourth floor, for example, that would increase your capacity by another 100 students as well. So we really feel like this building is going to, is going to live 30 years or more with the capacity that's available. Now, there's a number of spaces in that calculation, just by the way, of student capacity that aren't included. And some spaces that aren't included are special ed classrooms, some of the, some of the larger spaces, the robotics labs, some of the maker space labs, even some of the areas on the bottom floor. So if those were repurposed for classrooms, for example, we probably have an additional 10 classrooms in this building that we could grow into to increase capacity. So I think if we were to do a full capacity analysis of this building in its worst-case scenario, I am confident that we could accommodate more than 1,500 students.
I really appreciate the amount of community space there is, that is going to be available or projected to be available. My question is about high school students make noise. How much sound buffering will there be? For instance, if you have in an open space, a community meeting, will it be, how private will it be?
Yeah. Well, the public spaces are, by necessity, I think, going to be louder. However, in these spaces, for example, there are these collaborative breakout spaces here and here on this floor. There are teacher workroom spaces, and then there are other community spaces that if we were to hold a meeting, for example, in the media center, that would be, that would be more quiet than others. We also are looking at appropriate acoustical tiles to make sure that the sound rating is right. We're looking at floor treatments that absorb rather than bounce off sound as well, and then, and the wall treatments will make a difference as well. So we really feel, I, I won't say we, I, and the architects really feel good about having multiple spaces for multiple purposes, so that if you did want to have a private meeting with, say, 25, 30, 40 people, we can find a nice quiet space for that, while at the same time, we may have 15 kids working on a collaborative project, a robotics project, for example, in the innovations common. So we've got a lot of different, a lot of different opportunities.
Are there any specific design considerations in the event of a lockdown or evacuation situation?
Yeah, great question. So this, this design, we're really excited about this design. As a matter of fact, Brailsford, Dunleavy, Gilbane, Stantec, well, Stantec, the architects, and I submitted a paper to the A4LE, which is the Architects for Learning Environments Conference in Dallas, Texas, this coming weekend, not this weekend, but next weekend. And the paper was accepted, and the reason that it was accepted was because they, they looked at the design, and our whole purpose for submitting the paper was to talk about safety and security in a vertical building, and talking about how do we provide options if there was a need for a lockdown and the like. So we'll be presenting to architects from across the country about this design and what we're doing. So one of the things you'll see, and it really starts with that secured vestibule at the very beginning when you walk in, and then all of the visual passive security that's happening. So the glass in the front, people will be able to see who's coming. On the sides, we'll be able to see who's coming, and in the back as well. But in the case of a crisis event where we need to lock down, there are a number of ways that we can lock this building down, or if needed, evacuate from the building. So you'll see on the fat bar, there is this back stairwell and this stairwell in the front, as well as the main staircase that goes up, and that is one of the first areas of egress. So if there were a critical event or an emergency that was happening in this area, for example, this whole bar can be locked down, so whoever's on this side will not be able to access anybody on this side, because these doors, and these doors over here will close and lock. Then anyone in this bar can evacuate and get out as needed. If something were happening on, say, the fourth floor, and we needed to lock down between the third and fourth floor, these doors also lock. So there is a gate that would drop in the case of an emergency, and these stairways would become inaccessible, so nobody could go up. These doors would lock, and these doors would lock as well. So we would be able to isolate then any kind of... So we would be able to isolate, then, any kind of emergency event on any of the floors by doing, by locking down these floors by stairwell. So each of these stairwells can lock down. The other thing that is happening in the building is that there are, because there is such good visibility throughout the building, people will be able to make decisions about whether to get out, or to stay, or to lock down. And one of the things that our architect mentioned at the beginning was that, in the renderings, we didn't show what the glazing would look like along the classroom walls yet, because we're still figuring out how best to work through those. But whatever the glazing, or whatever the window treatments are that are in classrooms, will have the capacity to block that out as well. So nobody will be able to see into the classrooms. So if students are sheltering in place or locked down, they would be safe as well. And the other thing is that we're talking about is, again, trying to figure out ways to avoid circumstances as opposed to just locking down. Because oftentimes, locking down in place isn't always the best option. Sometimes, the best option is to get out. And this building does offer a lot of egress, but it doesn't offer a lot of accessibility from the outside. And that's another piece that's important. I forget exactly how many doors are at the current George Mason High School, but there are a lot. This building alone limits access rather significantly. All of the exterior doors will have card readers as well, and we'll be working with students not to prop doors open and the like.
Chris Thompson. First, I want to say thanks for putting this on, because this is, you guys have really responded very nicely to the comments that I had, the questions that I had. I'm just really impressed with everything I'm seeing now, so thank you for that. The question is about the overall project budget, where we stand with it, and what are the risks to the project if the budget gets away from us?
Yeah, it's a great question. And right now, what we've been given is a $120 million budget, and we obviously are taking that extremely seriously. We have let the first tranche of VON go for roughly $6.5 million that covers architecture engineering and some of the soft costs associated with the project itself. Our next tranche will take care of much of the structural steel and the like. So we're working very closely as we head into the design development phase to, one, listen to what the contractor and the architect are telling us about price, because they're going to go out to market in the next month or so, and they're going to bid this project based on the market. We've given them a construction cost limit already and said you can't exceed this. So they're going to take it to market. We're also getting a secondary, once we get the design development documents, we're also getting a secondary independent evaluation of what the cost of the project is, and then we'll do some reconciliation from there. We feel really good in the conversations that we've been having with the Gilbane-Stantech Quinn Evans team, that we will be able to meet the construction cost limit and also reserve some money for an owner's contingent. And then also, Gilbane is carrying a contingency, an escalation contingency, and that would be for things like if steel goes up because of tariffs, or concrete goes up, or whatever goes up. And then there's also a contingency on their side. So there is some buffer in there, so that if there are circumstances that we run across, we'll be able to manage through those. The biggest risk that we had coming into this project to be, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but are the soils around the school? Because when we did Mary Ellen Henderson, we ran into some issues as we went deep. So we asked them to bid it with deep foundations. So as they bid the project, they knew that there would be that risk upfront. So that's one risk. The other is, quite honestly, is community expectation, right? I want to build the best high school we can build here with all of the things that we all want collectively, and with the very best finishes that we can find. But there are some things where we're going to have to not have the very best finishes that we can find. And there are going to be some trade-offs in terms of space that we have. But I really feel confident that what we do come up with, if there is a need to look at a different flooring type, or a different ceiling grid, or whatever the case may be, that it won't impact the quality of education or the instructional program that happens in the building. Thanks for that question. Sure. Okay.
Just a quick one. At planning commission meeting Tuesday night, we heard plans for upgrading the security at Henderson. When will those plans for changes in the front entrance of that be available? And I'm so glad we're looking at it.
Yeah, we have a vestibule at Henderson as well.
It's not real secure.
That currently is not a secure vestibule.
Right.
That's right. We do have the Securitas person that sits in the front and does buzz people in. But we are looking at finding ways to create that security vestibule at Henderson the way that we have at the high school. The timing on that, I'm going to look at Kristin. She's been working on that, so if you'll hand her the mic.
Oh, hi. You can answer my question?
I'll try. Awesome. So thank you so much for the question.
This is Kristin Michael. She's our chief operating officer here in the school.
As part of our submission for our capital improvement program, we included that change to Henderson. So currently, at Henderson, you are buzzed in through both the first and second set of the doors. But when you're going through, badging in with Securitas, you're already inside the building. So we submitted a change that would bring the outer door farther out, so you could come in the first door, badge in with Securitas, just like you will at the new high school, and then be let in the second door. We haven't fully bidded that yet for cost, but our projected budget would be, allow us to do it at the same time that we open the new high school.
If you're looking at adjustments to the front door of Henderson, are you also looking at, and this would be much bigger, adjusting the location, since with the new high school, you're going to have the buses coming along the side, and you've got the middle schoolers coming around, all the way around to get to the school? So you're really changing a lot of the flow of how they work together.
Their bus stop is going to be roughly the same place that it is now. And so we aren't looking at changing where the front door of Henderson is. We do want to keep those as, they're two very independent schools, and we want to make sure that they keep their own identity. And so the way that the street grid works with that school street that comes around, I don't want to keep flipping back and forth, but the buses will line up along that street at an angle. So they'll be right on that line where they currently are, and actually maybe closer to the front of Henderson, in some cases, where kids are walking around. But we don't intend to change the front door, but we do hope to, at the same time, do a couple of things, just for efficiency purposes. One is doing the security vestibule at Henderson. So the buses will line up here at an angle. And so right now, they're queuing up kind of back in here. So they actually are closer to the front of Henderson. But we are looking at doing a couple of things. And the other thing that was in the capital improvement planning process is looking at upgrading the floor, or updating, not upgrading, updating the flooring at Henderson. Right now, it has 12-inch VCT tile. We are looking at doing a different floor treatment in the high school. And as we're doing the floor treatment in the high school, it just seems to make sense to potentially also carry it all the way through, since the two schools meet. And it will be about the time that that flooring needs to be replaced, anyway. Not the gym floor. No, we are not going to upgrade the gym floor one more time at Henderson. Yes, sir. Can you get the microphone? That was funny, actually.
Hi, Dave Snyder, City Council. I actually have a school question.
All right.
So finishing up the safety issues, how about fire and EMS? Are your elevators big enough to have an ambulance cot go up in them and things like that? So maybe explain that half, the other half of the security side, fire and EMS. And then, secondly, comment a little bit on career education, what your plans are, how we're coordinating with the university, and potentially some sort of synergy with the whole Amazon effort over in Arlington County. So assuming hypothetically that Arlington County may at some point close their career center, what contingency plans do we have for career-type education, either on our own or along with cooperation with other entities, including those adjoining us? Thank you.
Sure. Great questions. So the first thing is, we've been coordinating closely with Tom Polara's office, who is our person for EMS here in the city. And so fire and safety code is going to be taken care of first and foremost in the building. The two lifts that are in this building are larger than the average lift. In fact, they're big enough to accommodate a class. That was important to us, so that if you had to take a whole class up or a whole class down, you could. They're longer, as opposed to wider, to accommodate for a gurney or some sort of piece of equipment from down in the basement as well. But certainly, we will have the capacity to pull up and down any kind of emergency equipment that needs to happen. There's also redundancy. There's going to be two of them, as opposed to just one, and that also was important. With respect to the second question, and Dirk sort of alluded to it a little bit as he was talking about the plans, one of the things that we are really interested in doing, and I mentioned this before, is working alongside with our partners, not only at the Ed Foundation and our teachers, but also looking at how we might be able to utilize this space here. This is the bridge, is that it? That's not, let me go forward just a second. There's a bridge space that happens between the fat bar and the skinny bar around the Innovations Commons. And that Innovations Commons bridge space on the third level, right here, is that it? Dirk? So I'm sorry, fourth floor. Let me say, let me keep going here, sorry. Fourth floor is an important space for us in terms of highlighting some of those career and technical education components that are important to us as part of what we do, not only for international baccalaureate programs, but also just generally at George Mason High School. So you'll see here that the robots are out. Robotics and engineering are huge components of our program already. So we want to leverage that. The other thing that I think we need to leverage as part of our career and technical education programs is this idea of sustainability and renewable energy. So what has been sort of thought about and begun to plan for here is, how could this classroom be kind of a showcase classroom that would incorporate our vertical gardens that are there, looking at sustainable farming? We have a farm bot that was purchased by the foundation for our school that could also be in there. But this could be a conditioned space where we are looking at developing hydroponics, looking at sustainable farming and the like, but also would be a source of big data, where we could do a lot of gathering of information, utilizing the building also for big data. So how much energy are we using as part of our PV array structures and the like? We've spoken already with James Madison University, who does a huge wind, a wind energy program down there, about how there may be some sustainability components that could be part of this program at our school. So that's sort of Mason-specific. More to your point about how do we begin to collaborate more broadly across the region, we've had a number of meetings, and I want to say it's probably four at this point, between the superintendent in Arlington and some of his team, and the superintendent Alexandria and his team, and then our folks from here in the City of Falls Church, to talk about how could we collectively develop something that would create, in some ways, some synergies and some relationships between and among the school divisions as they relate to career and technical education? Because Arlington Career Center is important to us, and we send kids there for a variety of reasons. Alexandria has some really great programs around big data, around robotics, not robotics, but computer science and the like. Alexandria City has already engaged with Virginia Tech to develop a partnership. And so Arlington County and Falls Church City is also interested in engaging not just our Virginia Tech folks right next door, but how can we also engage the folks that are developing the Virginia Tech site over in Alexandria, which has a link to Amazon? So Amazon is helping support the Virginia Tech site as well. So we're really trying to figure out how we can connect all of these worlds together to think about developing internship programs for kids, or thinking about how we might be able to leverage the undergraduate or graduate program at the university to help support our programs as well. One of the things that Virginia Tech is looking at doing at their site is sort of an innovation headquarters, if you will. So think about a five-story or six-story building, and on each floor of that building, there might be different large companies that are associated with, you know, aerospace, robotics, cybersecurity. And so how could we maybe even have a space in that building where the three school divisions could come in, have an access point, our kids could go in and kind of move through that building and go to those different places? And then, also, on our site, if kids from Arlington want to leverage the sustainability work that we're doing here, how might we invite Arlington students over for part of their day, or Alexandria students, just like our kids go to Arlington for part of their day for the Career Academy? So we're trying to, it's a long way of saying, we're trying to work out some sort of consortia where we can access and leverage each other's strengths. But I think one of the things we can bring to the table is, one, our IB program, which is a really outstanding program, but also thinking about how does our robotics program and how does sustainability sort of work into that as well? And I know that's a lot of time that we've spent, and I think we might have cut into some other time. So I want to give the city manager some space here, so.
Well, my thought is, we could, we've got, we'll do kind of an abbreviated presentation on the economic development piece. And to do that, we generally promise people to get you out by 4 o'clock. So I think we'll take about 15 minutes to go through information and then take questions on it. So I am joined by Carly Aubrey, who is with the city planning department and who is the city's project manager for the site. And she will talk about the schedule of our public process for reviewing plans for the 10-acre development project. In addition, we have Laura Schoenfeld with Penn Hoffman, and Evan Goldman with EYA. They represent the development team, and they will talk about the special exception application. Mr. Goldman, in particular, will walk us through some of the key aspects of it. The sun is coming in right through that window onto our screen, which is a bit unfortunate.
Where are we going here?
Yeah. Well, let's go to the next one. Okay. So first, let me just start by saying, well, why are we opening 10 acres of the campus site up for development? And the reason is, we have a very ambitious high school need that we're trying to meet. It's expensive. As Dr. Noonan noted, it's a $120 million budget, and that would, in of itself, represent about 15 cents on the tax rate to accomplish that project. So we have very valuable real estate, and our plan, really for about four years now, has been to take a portion of the campus to market, because it is so well situated next to West Falls Church and next to I-66. It could be transit-oriented development. The city has laid out very high environmental goals for that 10-acre site. And the city also has really high ambitions for placemaking. We want to create an amenity-rich environment that people will want to come to. Our basic mission statement, however, is to generate revenue to help pay for this state-of-the-art high school that you just presented. So this, I won't go through the details of this, but suffice to say that this is about a four-year planning effort. It really ramped up after the referendum in November of 2017. And we've been sort of kind of fitting the different pieces together with the city council and the school board working closely. We're at a really critical period right now. You've just heard about construction plans for the high school. So we're getting very close to being final on the high school. And right now, we're in a very intense process of land use approval and consideration for the 10 acres of development. We're shooting for a May timeframe for a high-level conceptual approval and entitlements for the development team for this project. What we're talking about is important for everybody to understand, we're talking about construction happening after the high school is complete. So 2021 is when construction of the economic development piece would start, and shooting 2023, 2024 for when things are open and people can actually come into that site. So we have entered into an interim agreement with the development team. We're working very hard with a May timeframe to then get into a final agreement, which we call the comprehensive agreement, for a 99-year ground lease for the property and all the terms that go with that. The basic things that are shrouded in the interim agreement is that we have a land payments, it'll be a capitalized land lease, and so the total payments are approximately $44.5 million. I say approximate because the Phase II land payment will be appraised value or $10 million, which is ever is higher. And then there's a couple of options also that could increase value. And then there's a couple of options also that could increase value. And first is a shared parking lot, and I'll describe that in just a moment. And the second is creating a community development authority that would assess taxes on the 10 acres only, but that authority would also issue bonds to help pay for infrastructure for the 10-acre site. So that's, those are two options which have a value of between $6.1 and $7.8 million in addition to the basic land payments. There's also a capital event payment per occurrence, and I'll describe that in a little bit more detail in just a moment. That was quick. So I think we're missing a few things. Well, this will be brief. While we're putting those up, I'll just note there are a couple of things. Since we last met, we met a month ago, and since that time, at that time, we indicated we were negotiating a few changes to the interim agreement to improve the financeability of the project. Those two changes, which were beneficial to the developer, were, one, to increase the residential component of the project of about 150,000 square feet, $50,000 for senior housing and $100,000 square feet of residential uses for condos or micro apartments. That was one thing that was done to improve the financeability of the project. And secondly, in the early construction period, to have a tax payment in lieu of taxes, which does involve an abatement of about $4.5 million of taxes during that four-year period in exchange for an increase in the lease payments to the tune of $200,000 a year for the life of the lease. And I've got a few slides on that. But this slide is about the basic deal, which was not changed by the things that I just mentioned. So a key part of the structure of the base land payments is that the first payment would be in June this year. So before we issue all the bonds for the high school, we would receive an equity payment, a non-refundable payment for the property. Then there'd be a series of payments of $7 million each during the construction period, and with the little kickers of the CDA and the parking coming in 2021 or 2023. Then the Phase II payment would be in 2029 at the latest. It can be earlier than that, but there's an end date of 2029, and again, that's $10 million or appraised value, whichever is higher. And that's for Phase II. So let me, I've just described this. The increase in ground rent is being granted to the city in exchange for an abatement of a portion of the taxes that would be paid during the construction period. $4.5 million of taxes to be deferred during that construction period. The nominal value of the $200,000 increase in ground rent is $48 million, and if you bring that to present value, it's a $7.1 million value to the city using a relatively low discount rate. They will be paying taxes during the construction period, so this is what they would be paying. This is what we've agreed that they'll be paying under the payment in lieu of taxes. So during construction, the city will still receive $12 million in real estate taxes, but we're projecting that without this payment in lieu of taxes program, that that number would be approximately $16.5 million. So that was a benefit to the development in exchange for long-term value for the city. The residential density, with the increase in residential density that was granted, and this is now in the special exception application that is going out to board and commissions for review, again, $50,000 for senior, $100,000 for either condos or micro apartments. So with that, we look at commercial ratios as kind of one of our markers. We're looking for a very strongly commercial project. Phase I will have a 30% commercial ratio. Initially, when we negotiated the first interim agreement, it was the 34%. Phase II is still heavily commercial, and that's unchanged. And so the overall project has a ratio of 40% commercial uses, and that's retail, office, hotel. There are some additional profit sharing and capital event fees. There's an additional kicker where the city will receive any increases in land value that happen during the financing phase, the city will receive 25% of that value. And then the capital event fee, what that means is that in the future, they may sell this project, or they may go to the banks, and they may refinance it. Each time that happens, it's called a capital event, and the city will receive a 0.5% fee, 0.5% of the total value of the transaction will come to the city. So we're anticipating that to be approximately $2.4 million for the leasehold each time that occurs. And then each of the condo sales, there's a quarter of a percent capital event fee, and that'd be assessed on individual condos as they're sold, and that also is for the life of the 99-year term lease. Every time, yeah. So that will be something we'll need to explain. So the question was, will this go in, you know, for future buyers of condos? When you buy a condo, you pay a recordation tax. This will be added to that normal recordation tax, and it is something that we'll probably get questions about from individuals who buy condos in this project, but it will be written into the covenants of the property as to that will be part of the deal. And again, I've already mentioned this, the kickers for the CDA and the shared garage. And just one more slide, and then I'm going to turn it over to Carly. When we talk about the shared parking garage, this is what we're talking about. So it's very close to Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. It has some benefits. A, it will provide parking for the schools at no cost to the schools, and then the parking for surge for football games or performances at the new larger auditorium and things like that. There are opportunities for that surge parking just to happen right there in the garage. But it will be shared. This parking garage will serve the office building, the senior facility, and the hotel and the civic space, which you'll hear a little bit more in just a moment as well. So that's a quick overview, and Carly, I'll turn it over to you, just so everyone understands what the process will be going forward. Or do you want this? I'm going to give this to Evan, so he'll be ready.
Jeez, I don't know if anybody can see this. But basically, so I'll touch on the interim agreement, why I talked about. There are some elements in here, in the material terms, that are feeding into the special exception entitlement plan. So, and those are things related to the types of uses and the approximate square footage of uses, such as commercial and retail and hotel, and then the residential. So the applicant submitted the special exception entitlement application on February 4th, and that has been sent to staff for review. And then tomorrow evening, the city council will have a first hearing on the application, and then it's anticipated that it will get routed out to boards and commissions for review. And that's our normal list of boards and commissions, including the school board, the architectural advisory board, tree commission, planning commission, just to name a few. Those reviews will happen in March, and I'll touch on that more in a second. And then between March and April 1st, we'll get the, some of the comments back from boards and commissions. Planning commission will make a recommendation on April 1st. And then between April 1st and May 28th, will be, at least as another round of comments, or step back, another submission from the applicant on, based on boards and commissions review and staff review. And there'll be another round of reviews from staff, and then anticipated another, at least two works, or at least one work session from council before going to a second hearing on May 28th. And so the next step after that would be the special exception site plan, and that's where a lot of the details that are kind of broadly touched upon in the SEE will get fine-tuned in this phase. And as you see, it follows the same process, but it will be a longer timeframe. It'll be about two years. So I'll just also mention that this SEE is kind of a broad-based plan, and you'll see when Evan goes through it, it's going to establish things such as building heights, general uses and square footages, parking ratios, and general landscaping concepts. But most of the details will be worked out here. So this is the board and commission schedule that we have, and this is 99% finalized. So there's basically about six meetings within a two-week timeframe, starting about two weeks from now. So that's just all the boards and commissions that'll be looking at the project. And these are public meetings, so the public is welcome to attend. And the website for this project will be updated with these dates once the timing and locations are finalized, which should be within the next couple of days. This is the website, this top one, and you can sign up. My contact information is in there, but you can also sign up to get notified whenever major updates are made, such as scheduling. And then here's other, a couple of other locations, places to send comments to. I'll turn it over to Evan Goldman with EYA and the development team.
Can you all hear me? Is this working?
That's for the TV.
Oh, it's only for the TV? Okay, I got it. So I'll just speak loudly. Yeah, perfect. So this is a very faded-out image. Sorry about the sun on the screen. It's hard to see. Evan Goldman, I'm a...
Does that work?
Oh, yeah, that's good. So I'm Evan Goldman, Executive Vice President of Development.
Is this bad form?
Are you going to hold it? You have to open it up.
No, it doesn't really do much. That doesn't do anything.
Okay, sorry. So Evan Goldman, I'm Executive Vice President of Development and Acquisitions at EYA, and Laura is with us from P&amp;Hoffman as well. Usually, at most of the meetings, we have four or five of us, because there's Regency, EYA, and P&amp;Hoffman, which are three companies that join together for this project. And we often have multiple people from our companies at these meetings. There's about 15 of us working behind the scenes on this project. I'm going to do this very quickly because we only have 15 minutes, and we are actually presenting this in more detail tomorrow night at the councils. So to the extent you have the ability to attend tomorrow evening or watch on TV, you would get a lot more detail about the project, and we'll be in front of you many, many, many times over the next few years. So I think it is much more important at this point, given that the schools are about to break ground for the majority of these meetings, really to be focused on the schools as they were, and we can kind of all learn what's happening with the school itself. So, but just general overview, Carly really hit one of the main points here, which is everything you just saw from Dr. Noonan's presentation was a lot of detail about what the school's going to be. It was elevations, it was architecture, it was design, it was really thinking through the interior spaces of those buildings in a very thoughtful way. A lot of that, for us, will come at the next stage, at the SEE site plan process, which will kick off this summer, and that will go, hopefully, 12 to 18 months. And so at that point, we'll get into a lot more detailed conversations. At this level, what we're asking for is the SEE approval, which is much more general. It's general heights, it's general square footage, general uses, and it kind of allows us to move forward with the project, to make our first payment, generally knowing what we're going to get. Oh, the sun just cooperated. And then go forward with a more detailed plan in the future. These are the images that we shared when we were competing for the site, and really not much has changed from our original plan from a design perspective. We still have this great commons park space in the center of the project, which I'll show you in plan. We still have buildings of different heights. We intend to have architecture of the city, a lot of brick, especially a good amount of red brick on those buildings. We have a hotel, we have an office building, we have condominiums, senior housing and apartments, and then a bunch of retail on the first floor, including a grocery store. So all of that is the same. Wyatt alluded to a civic building, which we have a, which is right here, and it's this, it's, right now, the assumption is a second-floor music venue, which we hope to bring to Falls Church, with a space that can be rented out for events or parties as part of that music venue. We're also talking to a music school for that building as well. And so to try to play off of some of the great stuff that's happening in the school across the street and have retail within our project that makes sense for the students, for the families of Falls Church as well. And then down in the commons park, this is a rendering that we did about six months ago. All of this will get updated starting over the summer as we get into more detail about what the park is going to look like. But the concept for our central commons is for it to be a space where the community can gather, whether it's movie nights or arts festivals or music festivals, whatever it may be, to have a place that on a regular cadence, the community is gathering at the project and really accepting this as the center of the western part of Falls Church. These are images from our actual SEE application, and so as you can see, unlike some of the more detailed drawings that you were seeing from the school, it's a little bit more block diagram. It shows you where the buildings are going to be on the site. It shows you generally where the roads are. And to give you a little bit of orientation, this is Leesburg Pike Route 7, Haycock Road going this way. The new school's over here. We've created a grid of streets and broken up the development parcel into four blocks. On the southeast side, there is a grocery store intended with an apartment building above it, and retail as well. On the southwest side, we have a senior housing building, an office building, and the above-grade parking garage that you've heard about. On the northwest side, right now, we have a hotel shown. And on the northeast side, we have condominiums and Phase II, which is an office building and residential building in the future. And so there are some kind of key planning, reasons why the plan looks like this. Many of you have heard this before, but there are some new faces, so I'll talk about this quickly. The site has quite a bit of grade topography, so it slopes up about 26 feet from Haycock Road to the center of the site. You may not notice that today because the high school is fairly flat and sprawling, and you may not pick up on how much grade there is. There's quite a bit out there. And one of the most important things to make retail successful is you need to have a flat, walkable main street. You need to be able to have outdoor cafes that aren't, you know, tables tipping over or on an angle. And so we had to find the place on the site where we could create that central main street. And so that's right here on what we're calling Commons Drive today. So number one, that's the place on the site where you could create the flat street for retail. Number two, it points us back towards the metro, which is really critical. And so for those of you that live in the area, of course, you all know that there's a metro station hiding back there. For a lot of people, it's just not very obvious. It's fairly away from the main street. And so one of the goals of our project, in concert with development of the Virginia Tech parcel and the potential development of the Womata parcel, is to create this 35-acre district where everything leads to the metro front door, and by doing so, increase the amount of people that are taking the metro, walking to it, biking to it, and actually increase ridership at that station, which is surprisingly low for a station inside the Beltway, and can actually help with some of the traffic issues we have if we can increase activity there. So that's one of the main reasons the street ended up here. We also cared a lot about how we interact with the schools, and so the schools created this great plaza right outside their front door, and that creates opportunities for us. First of all, it's a nice buffer space. Second of all, it creates not just our main commons open space, but a secondary open space on the site, and gives us the ability to coordinate with the schools for activities, for overflow, you know, if they're having a big, a show or a concert in their auditorium, you know, what does that, what wants to happen outside on the plaza or in the common spaces those evenings as well? I'm just going to hit some of the key slides. This slide, the red, is showing all the retail, the grocery store right here in orange. So all the kind of downstairs, first-level spaces are activated with retail. So that as you're walking or strolling in the space, it's alive and active. We're seeing a fairly high restaurant, restaurant mix here. So that's the type of place where you don't necessarily have to make a reservation. You can kind of show up, and there'll be eight or 10 restaurants to choose from in the evening. Upstairs, these are the different spaces. I already kind of told you what these buildings are, but each of these colors represents a different use type. So office, senior housing, hotel, music venue, and residential in yellow. As part of the SEE application, there'll be, this slide, it's not expected that you'll be able to read this from here, but this is one of the most critical slides of the SEE application. It designates minimum square footages and maximum square footages for different uses. And what that does is it gives the community and the city the assurances of what you're going to get, and gives us the ability to have a little bit of flexibility over the next year or so as we get into more design. It also allows us to, you know, a building may flip from this block to that block, or might move over time throughout the plan, as long as we're hitting these guidelines. Everything here will go back to the planning commission and the council for approval ultimately before we build it. So to the extent a major move, like a building swapping with another building, happens, that's something the council would ultimately approve before we start construction. This is a 3D axon of the site. Right now, it's really just blocking diagrams showing levels, potential levels of spaces within the buildings, and it shows it to you from different vantage points. And this diagram, also a fairly important one, talks about maximum heights for each of the buildings. So the program we've chosen for our project, both the Phase 1 and the ultimate Phase 2, which is roughly 1,004,000 square feet of development, total 1,001,000 in Phase 1, or 1,050,000, fits within the colored diagram that we're showing here. These are the maximum heights we could go to. And the reason this is in here is to the extent the council, or the city, or the residents want to protect certain areas and make sure that those areas stay lower, we've shown that here. So up against the high school, even though we could go 15 stories by zoning here, we've limited that height there. And in other places, we've for now just shown the full 15 stories of height, and then that can be modified over time as we go through not just this process, but the S.E.E. site plan process. We've done shade studies, which I'm going to go really quick and just show you what's in it, but not talk about any of this. We have traffic flow and bike lanes. We have sections for all the streets, this being one of the more important ones. This is the common street where the park is. It's a 60-foot-wide space in the center of the, of the drivelanes, and it has bike lanes on the inside park side of the, of the space, which is a safer place to put them away from the parked cars so you're not getting doored by somebody opening their corridor as you're riding your bike. It also creates opportunity for four rows of trees in that central space, so it'll feel nice and covered and shaded. We also have sections of the other streets, the most important one I'll focus on right now, and we will spend a lot more detail and time on this in the future, but given time, I'll just rush through it. On the north side of the site, which is New Street B, there are protected bike lanes they were alluded to in the school's presentation, and that takes you all the way from the hawk signal at Haycock directly to the school and provides a safe path for kids to get to school, well, as employees, actually. We have images of potential placemaking, kind of precedent images for what the garage might look and feel like. These will get developed a lot more over the next three months before the May, May council meeting, as well as beyond that. But these are just examples from around the country of some cool ideas. And the idea here is to actually work with the schools on what that's going to look and feel like and who may actually do the art. We'd love to kind of incorporate the school itself as part of the artisans on the buildings. They're drawing, there are images in here about outdoor café zones and how, and how they might be, what the dimensions are, making sure that there's open space for pedestrians no matter what to continue to walk through, even when there's outdoor cafés. There's an open space plan here that shows what are the kind of shared open spaces and how big are they. There's a tree plan. These get into more detail from a landscaping perspective into the commons. And so you're starting to see the idea of a lawn and open space and hardscape spaces, a little retail kiosk in the park, the tree planting plan. Once again, we have concept images in the S.E.E. application, so you get a sense for what that part of the park might feel like, and we'll go into that tomorrow night a little more detail. These are different parts of the site and what the landscaping will look and feel like. And there's different parts. As you're on the northern side of the site, closer to the hotel and the music venue, the concept is for that to be very active, open space and park space for gathering, for movies, for things of that sort. As you get closer to Leesburg Pike, it's look, it's intended to be more passive and landscaped, a little bit more of a buffer from the cars and the noise on Leesburg Pike, but still open and, of course, for pedestrians, cars, and visual access into the project. Placemaking and place management is something we'll focus a lot on, not today, but in the future. And that's something that both EYA, P&amp;Hoffman, and my background before this, working at Federal Realty, have focused a lot on. And it's, you know, you can create a great place, but if you don't figure out how to get people there, it doesn't really feel great. And so a lot of what we will do is actually have this regular cadence of events that I talked about in coordination with the city, in coordination with the schools, so that people have a regular reason to return, whether it's a Sunday morning yoga class or a Friday night, a movie night, or it's some sort of music event, really something special that creates excitement for the project itself and for the neighborhood. And that will, that will, the placemaking will also be embedded throughout the fountains and the art and the textures and the materials. And so as we go through this process over the next 12 to 18 months, you'll see a lot more highly-developed plans on what that's all going to look like. For the May meeting, we will have what's called a placemaking and amenity plan, which will, will have imagery and precedent images of the types of things we hope to do, and then we'll work with staff over the next 18 months before our final approvals to figure out exactly what it will look like. And then finally, I'll just hit on, we get more into the engineering drawings in the S.E.E. application, utility plans, wayfinding for bikes, for cars. One thing here that's of note is, was mentioned in the school's presentation, was the addition of this turnaround drop-off for parents, and that really creates a safe space for kids to get right out of the car onto the plaza and get to the school. The original idea was to have that within the garage space here. This is a plan, everything within that dashed area can be closed down for events and still provide access to the garages. So maybe it's once a month, if we have a big event and we close down the actual streets, this really creates, creates a space that's about an acre and a half for a larger community event. And then, you know, people will still have multiple access points into the garages. This slide goes into the MVTA grant, which is an infrastructure funding grant of about $15 million that will provide pedestrian and bike safety along Route 7 in Haycock, provide intersection improvements on those major intersections, a hawk signal for safe pedestrian crossing of Haycock. So that's all being incorporated into our plans, and we'll do that construction as part of the project. And so that's, that's really everything that's in the application. You can see, obviously, it's not nearly as detailed as what you just saw for the high school, but we look forward to working with all of you over the next two years until we break ground on everything. Sorry, you don't need this.
Any questions for us on that?
Yep.
This is being shown as a 99-year ground lease. However, condos are being offered, so that implies that part of the property is being sold and not ground leased. And the question is, why would we have the sold part of the property in the center of it rather than on one of the extreme edges so that it could be segregated for redevelopment in 100 years?
So right, so right now, the condo portion is actually shown here. So it does attach to the outside edge of the property, and everything else is part of the ground lease. And that is a conversation we've been having with the city. One of the, and we'll, you know, continue to have that conversation over the next number of months.
Good point, and it's one that we talked about early on in the evaluation.
So, so part of that has to do with how we're going to phase the project, how we can create, one of the most important things is creating a complete retail street initially, so that that entire main street opens at once, and you don't have construction going on and a small bit of retail dripping out over time. And that means you have to have all of those uses on that main street, and that requires us to absorb all of what we're delivering, to have some of the condos on that main street. It's pretty critical.
I have two questions. Wyatt, the first one is for you, and do the changes that the developer is requesting, will they have any impact on the tax that we're going to be paying for this? That's the first question. And then the second question is, can you, it's for Evan, can you give us some idea of what the 50,000 feet and the 100,000 square feet might translate into in terms of units or something like that?
So first, in terms of fiscal impact for the project, we're doing that analysis right now. We'll, in our staff report for the special exception application for Phase 1, which we have the most detailed information on, we have an estimated or projected net fiscal impact of 4.8 million per year of ongoing tax revenue. So when I say net, that's after we've covered school expenses and other service expenses, public safety expenses that come with any new development. The changes to the program made it more dense. Because a component of it was senior housing, along with the condos and the micro-units, that increase in residential density actually had a positive impact on the fiscal impact analysis that we do as well. Now, this is all modeling. Our model has now been with the city for about 15 years or so, and we think it's good, but it is a model. So that's a kind of a brief answer to your question. We looked at it really hard, and, you know, what we're mostly interested in generally is commercial development, and the residential is, we recognize what makes a lot of these things happen, but the commercial is really what the city pushes for in, in these discussions.
Thank you. And then to the unit count question, from a senior housing perspective, the extra 50,000 square feet will add somewhere between 50 to 75 senior housing units. And then for the 100,000 square feet of residential density, if it's condominiums, it will be about 100 units. And if it's the kind of micro-units we talked about, which are much smaller studios and one-bedrooms, largely for single people or smaller couples that are trying to save money, those, that would be somewhere in the 125 to 175 units, depending on how small we go with those units. And that's all outlined in our agreement with the city.
Both or either or?
Con, if it's all, if it's 100,000 square feet of condo, it'd be about 100 units. If it's 100,000 square feet of micro, it'd be somewhere in the 125 to 175.
Mix of the two.
It could be a mix of the two. Right, we haven't gotten that far yet.
The north-south promenade there that exits out onto Route 7, Leesburg Pike, is that going to be a controlled intersection?
Yeah, we've asked for a traffic light there from VDOT. They seem open to that idea, so we have submitted an application to try to have that be a traffic light.
So if you were heading east on Route 7, you could actually make a left turn into the development?
Yeah. So what we've, what we've, what we've asked for so far, hearing from some of the supervisors in Fairfax County and, you know, based upon the residents that lived to the south on Chestnut, this intersection is intended to be changed into a right-in, right-out. That's kind of pre-approved before our work. So what we've, what we've shown is that the intersection does not, this is actually an old drawing. Hold on, let me go to a more recent one. That was our original submission. This one shows it really well. So Chestnut comes out right here. It's a right-in, right-out. There'd be a left-turn lane allowing you to turn into the project. That would be timed with the left-turn lane to Haycock. So for people trying to go north towards McLean or to get out onto Haycock, you would have the ability, a second route. It basically doubles the capacity of cars going left. If you were coming right, you'd be able to get right out. You would not be able to make a left out of the development onto, onto Leesburg Pike, and that's to resolve some of the conflicts at that intersection, which has, you know, has a bunch of accidents today.
So you couldn't go directly across from Chestnut?
You can't go directly across to Chestnut, right. There will be a pedestrian crossing, so for the neighbors to the south and from this area, they would be able to get across. And we have heard from, you know, I would say it's debated in this community. We've heard from residents in that community that would like that to be a full-movement intersection and the ability to move forward, and we've heard from a bunch of residents that would not like it to be. And so what we've done is followed where VDOT was headed, which was to close that and have it be a right-in, right-out, but to allow access into the development.
So you couldn't, if you were, again, traveling this time west on Route 7, you could not make a left into Chestnut?
Right, right. Which is, that's what the intention of VDOT is, yeah.
My question is about the commercial uses and the fact that you're including a grocery store. I just wanted to know, like, how confident you are as far as the feasibility of that, considering that we already have, like, a bunch of grocery stores and, like, three have opened in the city in the last year or so? And I guess, like, is there a Plan B for that space if that's not the, the best use when that comes online?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, so grocery stores come in all shapes and sizes and cater to different segments in the market. So there are a number of grocery stores in the city already. In this specific location, obviously, there's a Giant right across the street, and so we wouldn't do something that's going to directly compete with Giant. You know, we're not going to put a Safeway there that's almost, you know, identical type of product. The idea is to do something that's different and complimentary. And then, and the nice thing about having a grocery on the property is that it does help with attracting other retailers to the site, and that's one of the main things that our retail partner, Regency, it's one of the largest retail companies in the country, that's important to them. We do have some other ideas in our, that we're playing with as backups, just in case we're unable to get a grocery store that would fit within that space. So we have some ideas. We're not talking about those publicly yet, but our intention right now is to get a grocery store. We feel pretty confident that we will. Sorry, I'll go here.
So between, this is kind of covers the school as well. Between the high school construction, this construction, we're looking at, starting in June, construction in this parcel for, what, the next four, five years?
Four years, yeah.
Yeah. So we're already seeing disruption from the Founder's Row on, as they're getting ready to demo it, hopefully, once that's demoed. What are you, what are the mitigations to that? Because this is already a busy intersection. That's going to be a lot of construction for a long time, and it could get really messy during the next four years.
The, we have a ongoing bi-weekly planning group of city staff and the school staff to work through these issues and try to plan this out effectively. But what we do envision is that there will be, you know, this road will be constructed in the summer of 2021, as well as the exit point through this way. So access through the site for the school uses will be something that will go in, then it'll be fenced off so that construction for the whole area is fenced and secure. That's sort of the key thing.
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
There will always be circulation on that road?
Yes.
It just won't be in its final form until 2020?
That's right. Yeah, so, now, having said that, it is going to be disruptive. And so during the construction of the high school, for instance, we'll be putting a sewer line in this road to come down, and it will serve the high school. That portion of, like, the concession stand right now, Mary Ellen Henderson are on a pump station. We want to move to, to a gravity system that'll go down these roads. That road's going to be torn up during that period of time. It's going to be inconvenient for, for people. We'll do that work in the summertime, though, to try to minimize the inconvenience. There's going to be a lot of excavation and earthwork and things like that. We're going to try to keep trucks, you know, going right to Route 7 rather than impacting school operations. There are a ton of details that we'll need to work out on that, but we have a high school that, and a middle school that needs to operate, and we'll make sure it does.
From a, from a school construction standpoint, you can't see it up here, but as you'll recall in the drawings that were shown before, the tennis courts and the softball field come offline, and that is going to be the entryway for the vast majority of the construction that's happening at the school. So all of the traffic for the construction will come in the backside of the school, so it won't be coming in through the parking lot or anything like that. And that was important to us, to make sure that we maintain that site circulation and take as much of that offline as possible. It is going to have an impact, though, just in terms of the use of the facilities over the course of the next few years. This summer, we are going to take the Henderson School Building offline, and so our, our middle school summer programs are going to happen in the high school, which is going to be fine. The gym will still be used at Henderson. Next summer, we're going to take the gym and the, and the middle school offline. The school programs will happen at the high school. We'll still have availability at the high school for the gym spaces that are there. And then the third year, Henderson will be reopened for school programming. The gym will come offline, but in three years, the new high school gyms will be available. So it will be one summer without, without gym use.
Hi. So I, I wanted to tease out some background information on the revenue projections. So first of all, how many total residential units are now planned for this site? About 1,000 total? Is that right? About 1,000?
About 1,000, yes.
Okay, so that's point number one. Point number two...
Including Phase 2?
Including Phase 2, including Phase 2.
Including Phase 2. Point number two, that you talked about in your model, did your model ever include the construction of apartments or condos right next to the middle school and the high school? And the answer to that is obviously not, because we've never done this before. Is that right? So we're using a model estimating public service costs, a lot of which would be schools, but we're using a model that never dealt with 1,000 units within walking distance of both the middle school and the high school. Is that right? I just want to explain perhaps to people what the model is. That's a question to get you to explain the model. And then finally, the net revenue amount assumes what from the commercial? And this is a site that's 60% residential and 40% commercial, roughly. Is that right? So, again, because we're all interested in the bottom-line dollars, you provided the number, and I'm trying to figure out what the assumptions are. I think people will be interested in what are the assumptions? What are you assuming about commercial? And are you assuming 100% occupancy on day one? What are you assuming about commercial, and are you assuming 100% occupancy on day one?
Good questions, and thank you for that. So first, on the school children projections, which is an important part on the, on the cost side, not certainly the only one, it's about 50% of the cost equation is school cost. The, what we do is we use the data from all of the mixed-use projects that have been built in the city since 2003, and that generates pupil generation counts for the, for our, the cost side of the fiscal impact analysis. We will also do then a 50% escalation of that, just for the sake of understanding a range. Take what's data-driven and then just multiply that by 1.5, and that would be what we would view as sort of the outer band of what we think we might reasonably project for pupil generation. That's what we've done for other mixed-use projects in the city as well. Our experience for other mixed-use projects is that our projections for school-aged children have actually been quite good for all of our projects, with the exception of Pearson Square. And Pearson Square, which has very large units, has a very high number of school students, and that's really the outlier and one that we did not project correctly. And on the other point about commercial occupancy, the model does assume a stable project, which means we take a vacancy rate sort of at basic industry standards, but it assumes everything's operating normally, that we don't have, say, an empty grocer space or things like that. And so it's important for people to understand that assumption as well, and that will not be probably the case in 2024 even. It'll take a while for these things to lease up and to get to their fully stabilized position. And I'll defer to you for your statement on that, but in terms of the period it will take for stabilization.
Yeah, that's correct. Our tax projections, you know, we did our own tax analysis of the project, in which generally jived with the city's tax numbers, and we did assume a ramping up of both the office as well as the retail leases over time, and so that the project really stabilizes in 2025, about 18 months, 18 to 20 months after it opens, which is pretty typical for a project of this size and scale.
Maybe one more after that.
So I just have one other question about the commercial development side. Is the city thinking about or looking at any sort of, trying to bring local businesses and what you would have to subsidize to accommodate sort of the developers' financial expectations versus what a local business might be able to pay as far as rent and everything like that?
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing that, but we do have as part of our requirement, so of the, of the roughly 125,000 to 135,000 square feet of retail, about 16,000 square feet of it plus a 4,000 square foot outdoor space will be what we call these kind of civic spaces where the rent is less than what we'd expect from market, and that's largely to house arts, whether it's music or dance class or karate class or things that are going to be piggybacked off of what's next door at the school. And those, hopefully, will be local, and we're talking to at least one group so far for one of those spaces that is local. I'm sorry, there was a question over here.
Considering the issue that we had with the promise of the last hotel on Broad West, how is the C set up relative to guarantee of the hotel?
So what is in the interim agreement right now is that Phase One has to be fully under construction, including the hotel and the office, before they can move to Phase Two. So that's provision number one. And then secondly, with the 100,000 square feet of increased residential, the developer cannot commence that aspect of their program until the commercial components are under construction as well. We will seek under construction, yeah. So we will, we will continue that dialogue with the development team, and we've made it very clear that we do want guarantees that the commercial components will proceed. Those are more challenging. The parking rate requirements for them are typically higher, and the sort of marketing environment for commercial uses is tougher. There's no question about it. And, but the city will keep, you know, our interest in making sure that with the residential, the city will get the commercial components as well. Okay, so that's, I think, it for the program. Again, we'll be here for a few moments afterwards. Let me just thank everybody again for coming. Dr. Noonan, thank you for a great presentation with you and your team and through the development team. Thank you all for being here. I think this is like your 40th meeting, public meeting, over the, about the two months, three months since interim agreement was approved. And to all of you all, thank you for coming here on a, on a beautiful Sunday now, which has turned out to be a beautiful day. So we'll do our next one. It is currently scheduled for April 28. Some people have raised some...
March 24.
I'm sorry, the next one's March 24. Yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. So we will see you in March.
But let's talk about the April one just real quick. That also is the date that may be a conflict with the Homes Tour, which is an Ed Foundation plug here. Ed Foundation...
Makes money for the schools.
Makes money for the schools, so we may be modifying that. But I also want to say thanks to everybody for coming out, and I know Shannon Litten was here as well, and so I wanted to thank her for making it out on the school board, but...
And lastly, thank you to Falls Church Community Television, and this is the man behind the curtain who's filming this. Why don't you come out and take a bow? But we want to make these meetings and this information available to everybody, so spread the word. You'll be able to see this on the city, on the website, as well as on community television. Thank you. [applause]